Good evening, I'm Mayor Mark Northrup. I'd like to welcome everybody to the Hudsonville City Commission Regular Session dated September 9th, 2025. Let's do the roll call first.
Commissioner Volheys.
Here.
Commissioner Branson.
Here.
Commissioner Gray. Commissioner Groth.
Here.
Commissioner Camp. Commissioner Nitre.
Here.
Mayor Northrup.
Here. Would everybody please rise for the pledge of allegiance? My pledge of allegiance is to the Father of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, please seated. I believe Commissioner Nitre has a moment of silence he would like to speak to.
Yeah, just wanting to express gratitude for a safe back to school for all the kids in our community.
Couldn't have been spoken any better, thank you Dave, moment of silence please. Thank you, now it's time for public comments. If you choose to approach the dais, please state your name and your address, and we ask that you try to limit it to three minutes. I know there's some GAC, is that how we say it now?
Yeah.
GAC here that...
It's Juris Sound Area Action Committee, sorry. We merged, we were District 5. My name's Janet Martin, my address, I actually live in Jamestown. I'm sorry, do I need to do something?
Yeah.
Pull the mic down a little closer to you Janet.
Okay, is this better?
Is it on?
Is it?
Is it on?
I don't see a light, but I feel like I'm...
Steve, take a look at it.
You want me just to talk really loud?
No, 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 we'll get the fire chief, he's good with buttons.
Oh, there we go. I'm sure I broke the mic.
Okay, thanks.
All right, can you... oh wow, I'm gonna count it down a little bit. So we're a PAC, a Public Action Committee, and basically what we were concerned about is good government. We're not, we're a nonpartisan group, we're not here to promote Democrats, Republicans, independents, we're just good government, good responsible fiscal government. We started a couple years ago when we were looking at the county council races. We worked with Mark to try to work through that. But now we're just trying to make sure people vote. Our goal is, hey, here's what's going on in our district, we've got District Georgetown 11 and 12, and we've got 5, 6 and 7. I didn't prepare notes because I didn't want us talking, excuse me for that. But we're just here promoting and saying, hey, you know what? You have the right to vote, you should get out and vote, and you should meet the people you're voting for. So we rented the Sunrise Park Pavilion on September 22nd from 6:30 to 7:30. We have sent notes to every, we've sent emails to everyone who's running for the Hudsonville Commission, nearly one of the only races going on right now in our district, you are the only race. We're not promoting anybody, we're not endorsing anybody, we just want to put out information on our Facebook page and through our website that says, hey, come speak with these folks, come, you know, get to know them, read about them, and then go out and vote. It's your right, it's your right as a citizen, and early voting will start here over the next two weeks, the absentee ballot should come out. So we'd like to invite everybody that's running, I know some of you are running unopposed, so maybe a little bit less appealing, but we'll leave flyers with you. I know Gabby's coming for sure, and I know Tom is coming, hopefully we'll meet Jeremy, and we did send out questionnaires to everybody running, if you want to fill those out, we will put those on our Facebook page, just letting people know that you're running, and that this is what's going on, and when they should vote, and how they can vote. We'll link them to all those things, and we'll link them to your site that has a listing of information on all of them. That's what we're doing here.
Thank you Janet, and speaking on behalf of the community, I appreciate what you stand for. Democracy doesn't work unless we have people like you in the community that take an interest in our elected officials and our processes. And speaking from personal experience, you are highly supportive of elected officials and doing it the right way. So I can't support you anymore or speak anymore positively about you and GAC, thank you.
All right, thank you very much.
Do you want your copy? I think you can get one. Moving on, do you have other public comments? Hearing and seeing none, we'll move on to the consent agenda items. There are six. City Commission Special Session dated August 12th. City Commission Regular Session Minutes dated August 12th. City Commission Work Session Minutes dated August 26th. Planning Commission Meeting Minutes dated August 20th. Election Commission Meeting Minutes dated September 2nd. And the accounts payable reviewed and approved between meetings by the Finance Committee and the City Manager pay for the bills, combined check amount and the ACH funds distribution, Most of that is our producer responsibilities collecting for the public schools, correct?
Correct. Between the public schools, state and county, we disperse $9,345,000 in taxes, so...
One time a year?
Yes.
Is there a motion?
So...
It's been moved and supported. Are there any comments or any changes to the minutes that's posted in the agenda? We've all read them. Hearing and seeing nobody with changes, all those in favor approving the consent agenda items, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. Consent agenda items carried. Moving on to departmental reports, Chief, your honor.
Good evening. For the month of August, we responded to 53 calls for service. So that put us at the end of the month at an even 500 for the year. So our highest year-to-date total through August ever. So and the pace continues, we are truly busy. Calls of note, we did assist Georgetown with a garage fire at the Brook Meadow Apartment Complex. And then we also responded to a dumpster fire that was at the Port Sheldon Sports Complex. So those were the two fires, remaining are the calls, accidents and medicals, as you see in the report. We did do some training at a house in Jamestown, we were thankful that they had a house that they could let us use. We did a little search and rescue training in there as well, so that's invaluable experience for even some of the older guys, but definitely for the newer ones that have just gone through the academy. So that gives them some real-life practical experience in a training environment. And then for the month, our big thing was the fair. We had the fair in the month of August, and we spent a lot of hours there. It was probably the busiest fair that we've ever had, as far as the number of calls, things that we treated, from the minor to the serious. We were, there were some days we hardly sat down, it was that busy. So I don't know why, the weather was beautiful, it wasn't bee stings, it was heat exhaustion, but it was everything. Cuts, scrapes, burns, yeah. So it kept us hopping, which is good, that's why we're there, that's what we want to do. So it was nothing we didn't train for, nothing we didn't plan for, and nothing we couldn't handle. So it went very, very well, and I appreciate every firefighter's efforts that week. Any questions on the report?
Chief, I see you have five structural calls in a month?
Nope.
That's...
That is year-to-date.
Year-to-date.
Yep.
That's, I think, the highest we've ever had.
Yeah, I mean, I believe none of those, maybe one or two were in the city that were of minor nature. Most of those were assisting other agencies.
We had the big fire in Georgetown Apartments.
Yep, that garage fire back in August here, yep.
Any updates on that big beautiful machine that's coming our way at some point in the near future?
That is the next thing that I was gonna bring up, because I wanted to give you an update tonight, so I sent a text message this morning and said, how's the truck coming? And he said, well, you must know something I don't know, because last night it showed up in South Haven. So the chassis is complete, and it rolled into Spencer, and the picture is up on the screen there. It rolled into Spencer Manufacturing last night, late. That is the cab and chassis portion of it. We are going down there here in a couple weeks to inspect it, go through it, make sure it's exactly what we want before we accept it. Once we go through that acceptance, then they will start working on building the rest of the fire truck. So to say it's half done, it's probably about right, it's about half done. So thankful to see that, but you can see the colors, the gray over the red, and of course it'll get its striping later on, so... But yeah, some good progress, it's exciting. I sent pictures out to the guys today just to let them know where it's at. There's a couple firefighters that are gonna go down with me, as well as Bob Miller from DPW is gonna go down, and if I can talk Tyler and Trick, he might ride along too. So he can take us out for lunch to South Haven.
I see we're 12 for 12 for our number of firefighters?
Yeah, we are doing good on firefighters right now. We do have another applicant for a cadet, so we're working towards that, we are always taking applicants, but we are, we are doing good.
And even if we train them and when they leave for another community, we still support that for the rest?
We do, I mean, we want to be good neighbors to everybody, and yeah.
There were some rumors the fair was gonna close this year, last year. Rumors totally unfounded, but my phone blew up one night. So you know nothing of that, obviously.
I know nothing of that, no.
The Port Sheldon Sports Complex and the emergency egress, you wanna touch on that at all?
Just something that we're still working through, working on. For us, we look at it as it's a valuable component to responding in there as well as out of there. So we are thankful that we have one, and we are always looking, no matter where the location is, we're always looking for multiple ways to get into a area and get people out of an area. So it's something we're constantly working on.
Just so I understand, that egress works both ways, correct?
It does.
And it's needed for the sports complex if they had to evacuate at some point?
We would certainly utilize it for that, right? So if they would have an accident at their one and only driveway, we would utilize that to exit cars from the facility.
Finally, what is the next event, community event you're involved in?
The next one is gonna be Safety Night next week, Tuesday night, at Hughes Park.
Usually have a lot of people showing up there, and that's at Hughes Park?
That'll be at Hughes Park, yep.
At what time?
Goes from 4 until 7. I will be cutting out just a little early, we have the Ottawa County Fire Chief Legislative Dinner, and that's gonna be at Terrace Square again this year, so I will have to be there. So, but I'll be at the Safety Night for the first 45 minutes to an hour.
Good, thank you. Any other questions for the chief? Keep up the good work, thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to the Sheriff's Department, is there a report out here? Anything to add in that time? I reviewed the report, I didn't see anything of significance, I did add these stats, I just received them today for 2024, they are remarkably similar to previous years, you can see there, but we added this at a late, late time to the packet. I don't know why we got them so late in the year, but that is the 2024 numbers.
It is interesting to note that traffic accident number after the road realignment dropped precipitously. It's my $3 word for the evening.
I wasn't gonna bring it up Dave, but we all know that there's a lot of high school moms and dads that are very appreciative that their teenager wasn't creamed out in front of the high school this last year due to the road diet we put on on this 32nd and the safety it brought to the community. That's, that was a hard, long road to get to that point, but we know that there's a lot of moms and dads that never had a deal with their kid getting wrecked in front of the high school. So I want to thank everybody here, because that was a long road to get to that point where we did that transition on the, on the road and the single light at Marion Alley. Anything else for Fire Chief? Sheriff's Department, moving on to Dave, Emergency Management?
Good evening. Couple things to highlight. As Chief Essenberg said, our staff meeting, we, and this has become an annual thing for us, the meeting before the fair, we meet with him, we go through what happens if there's an MCI, what happens if there's a fire, how does our department support him and his department? So that way we feel prepared. So it's important for routine, they do it regularly. Couple things to highlight though, so the Crossfire Festival fireworks, they love having us up there to help, and I looked it up, and we've been doing that since 2010. So we're actually learning a lot doing that, because if we can move that many cars in Grand Haven, we can move anything we've got possible.
How many cars, Jim?
I don't, I don't know actual numbers of vehicles, but they say it's typically 250,000 people in a city designed for 100,000. So it does be a long traffic detail, usually 6 to 7 hours out there, and we apply that direct to charge, there are things that we do at the fair that have made that traffic plan better that we learned up there in Grand Haven. And so we enjoy helping them, but we also get a lot out of them. As far as the fair itself, yeah, we had over 200 hours in the department at the fair, and it all went well in terms of traffic. We do have some opportunities to improve the parking situation on some of the residential streets. More signs, more signs, more signs. And we've already started to talk about that, I met with the Fire Chief, and we'll work on that over the coming year, not only to get signs guiding people on where to and not to park, but also I want the, the Fair Board to have them provide some signs to get people to the bigger parking area, instead of everybody just going right to the fairgrounds, right? And then we have to turn around and get them out. So yeah, we anticipate improvements in the better year next year. As far as staff, we've got, still have two openings, I have one person that I spoke to the other day, he's going to fill out applications, we can interview him, I'm getting a good person to talk to, I think I've built a unique process, somebody's gonna know, and then I think I have maybe one other person that I have a phone call to, so we're inching along. I don't want to just fill the position because we, you know, we have an open position, I want to make sure that... It's taken us several years to get the team to where it is, right? And I want to make sure that we just build on that. Last thing, it's not on the report, because it's not really the speed unit, we have spent a long hour so far on the cell phone tower proposal, meeting with them again on Monday to go through not only some contract terms, but also some technical challenges, and so a couple people on my team are instrumental part of that, and we're committed to making sure that, you know, if that goes up, that we still retain all the capabilities that we've got in the OCS, we don't want to sacrifice any safety. So a fair amount of time goes into that, and you'll see that on a later report when we're all done.
Any questions or comments? Manager Report? You gonna talk about the tower at all, or not?
Oh yeah.
Okay. Yeah, I think Tyler said he'll give us an update and a little more of that at his final brief. So any questions for Dave? Keep up the good work Dave, and the fair is a great event for the city, brings a lot of people in the city, and I always receive really favorable comments about the work we do, so thank you very much. Moving on to the City Treasurer's Monthly Report for the month of August, I'll turn it over to you, Finance Director.
Good evening, everyone. As you can see, we're starting off the year strong again with our tax collection. On the second page there, you can see the peak is a little bit higher than previous years, just because our tax revenues are going up with the inflation there. Next is gonna be our expenses, and those are down slightly from previous years, but we'll get rolling on some of those projects, and I'm sure we'll catch back up and, you know, be equal with the previous years. On the investment report, you can see we made a little bit extra in interest this month. We had Treasury mature, and so that gave us almost $12,000 of interest when that matured. We buy them at a discount, and then when they mature, we get full value for them, so that works out pretty well for that, so you'll see.
That's the biggest number we've ever had, I think.
Yeah, pretty close, yeah, $51,478. So yeah, it's doing well, and the two-year Treasury is about 3.7-ish right now, so we're at 4.25% still for our two-year rolling average, so that's why, you know, last year you were asking why we're doing two years, and this is why, is to even it out over time, so now we're getting a higher yield than, than we would be on those investments, so now we're seeing the fruits of that, so it's with a higher interest rate. And then finally, the debt report. The Mirror's asking about the Chipping Plaza, and that will be paid off January, we just have to wait till January to make that final payment to Ken for tax purposes for him, that's how he wanted it structured, so he didn't get all the money in one year. So that's that, and then we have, then we'll be down to just our bond debt for Terrace Square and Harvey Street, so...
And we paid that principal down a million dollars, so that's quite a bit.
It is down, yes, yeah, a little over a million dollars, so that's good.
Any other discussions or questions on the finances from the Commissioner? Tyler?
Well done Andrew, thank you.
Nice job hanging there, appreciate everything you do for us. Moving on to Administration, recommendation to purchase a new pickup truck, is there a motion?
I make a motion to authorize the Department of Public Works to purchase per the attached quotations a Chevrolet Silverado 2500 from Berger Chevy, along with snowplows and installation services for the new truck, totaling $59,770.
Second motion. They're moving supportive, Bob, you wanna step up? I told, called Bob the other day, said I could find a used F-250 for him for a couple thousand dollars, with a couple hundred thousand miles on it, but he said that wouldn't meet our needs, so...
We have those too. But yeah, this memo feels like it's copied and pasted at this point, but I mean, everyone unique situation. We have 10 pickup trucks, not counting dump trucks, other heavy equipment in the fleet, but having 10 trucks, they're on about an 18-year service rotation right now, so I think I mentioned in there that there's a 2007 that's in the fleet currently. We're not gonna get rid of that pickup truck right away, typically we've taken delivery of the new one and taken the old one to the first available fairgrounds auction. We're gonna hang on to the old one for possibly another year, look and see how things go, because we did add another employee to the staff, another, another full-time employee to our staff this year, so we're gonna play that out, but this, this is basically the same truck that's served us typically with the snowplows front and rear. Purchased through the MI Deals Cooperative Competitive Bidding Government Pricing Program and support.
Any other questions for Bob? There's a motion on the floor, going once. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Gray. Commissioner Branson.
Yes.
Commissioner Volheys.
Yes.
Commissioner Groth.
Yes.
Commissioner Nitre.
Yes.
Mayor Northrup.
All right, before you leave Bob, a couple things, Mark, the mechanic, come back from the desert, you said, next month?
Yeah, just estimates right now, but Mark, our senior mechanic, is still deployed. He's estimating to be back in country sometime around first or second week of October. He's still gonna be on orders for several weeks after that, and I think he's got a mandatory, a mandatory two off before he's actually back to work, but we're very tentatively looking at welcoming him back at the end of November.
Just in time to get the snowplows on the trucks, right?
Yeah, he's gonna be busy.
Finally, before we walk away, any update on the 32nd work that started today, or yesterday?
Yeah, I'm happy to report, I guess I'm interested in how everyone else's experience has been, but traffic out there's been smooth. I really do think that the sign boards were helpful, I think a lot of people have actually found an alternate route and is avoiding the area. There haven't been backups at school in the morning or the afternoon, I mean, that can change on a dime, we can see things, but traffic's been working. The traffic that needs to move through is moving through, traffic that needs to turn is turning, and it looks like it's been pretty clean and safe up there.
Should we pull up the grant spreadsheet? You have that? I do believe that on the grant spreadsheet we show the 200, was it 35,000?
$237,000 on this one.
And that is on the spreadsheet, and that gets us to a grand amount of how much, City Manager?
I think we're 458 total construction on this one.
Our grants overall?
Yeah.
A lot. I know, the actual amount, yeah, it's a little, this is too small, you have to do better there. The city, you know, I really credit city staff for their efforts, I'll have an update on two grant applications coming, but we're doing a really good job finding external funds and matching it. You know, Bob and team, as well as Don DeVries, our engineer, when we're paying for asphalt 50 cents on the dollar, it provides for a lot more asphalt. We're looking at Highland Drive next year, and then 40th Ave from Grant...
To Chicago Drive.
To Chicago Drive next year, and we're able to do this in part with grant funding. So we're doing more with our existing resources, but really the effort, the effort goes to staff, they've done a great job.
Finally, before you leave, water mains? We're all done?
Yeah, we're 99% done. There's, you know, I would say 30, 30 to 40 that are outliers that are problems where we need to either replace curb stop valves, or some pump getting on curb stop valves. There are situations where the combination of the homeowner valve is either not present or not functioning, and our valve on the outside of the home is either we can't find it or isn't functioning. So there's gonna be a handful of those that we need to replace. Thankfully, we kind of planned for that, we have a project budget left that rolled over from the last fiscal year, so with John Rollo's promotion, I think you all have heard about that hopefully, we're gonna start chipping away at getting some yard stuff up there one at a time.
Finally, I want to thank you, how long have you been here Bob, how many years?
Seven plus.
Seven years. So over seven years, we've watched the capital improvement plan include upgrades for our water systems and maintaining a large water fund balance. And maybe you could tell us what the impact of us having a good plan did for the community?
Yeah, credit to so many people other than myself there. You know, I walked into a good situation there, I'm glad to continue to take part in it, but we had a pretty thorough capital improvement plan, we were pretty aggressive with replacing water mains, taking advantage of water main replacement projects in conjunction with repave projects. We kinda, I say we, you know, I'm gonna go back a decade before I started here, but a good deal of the older cast iron water mains in the city of Hudsonville has been replaced already, just because it's prone to failure. A lot of the cast iron water mains were in the older neighborhoods that had badly deteriorated roads, so there is good value in those projects. Like I say, a lot of that happened before I got here. In my time, we did the water meter upgrade, which was a big one, our equipment, both of our physical equipment in the field, our software, our mechanism to read was obsolete. You know, it was no longer supported by manufacturers, we, something broke, we couldn't fix it anymore. We've done booster station upgrades, the shared booster station at 32nd Avenue down by Myers, we've upgraded pumps and control system there. We have a fairly modern control system, our skating system, supervisor control and data acquisition. All looks good, and we've got a pretty good handle, I think, in the next five years here too. We have, both of the elevated water towers are scheduled for, you know, some degree of rehab, some repairs, repainting in the next five, and we've got, you know, three to five other smaller water main projects that are all in the five-year queue right now. So, you know, we're looking to, you know, a combination of water system reliability studies that are done by our engineering consultant, water system sanitary surveys that are conducted by Eagle, and staff's input to kind of plan out what spending looks like down the road. Meaning, credit to Andrew, he's, I know he's worked probably on the most involved rate study that we've done in my time here, in my seven years. We took a little bit of a lighter stab at it, back maybe five or six years ago, we had some help from Michigan Rural Water Association, but again, we got, a couple years ago, we got a $350,000 grant from the state of Michigan that partially funded the rate study that I was able to work with Andrew on. Really just a very transparent way to take into account every dollar that we foresee ourselves spending, we do the best we can to project the cost of those projects, the best we can to project the cost of what our full sale rate is gonna be from Ottawa County, and build that out to basically have your fund balance anywhere we wanted to. And, you know, our rate that we're charging right now and our rate projections over the next, at least, you know, going out, are we 10 years out right now, Andrew, five years?
Let's stick to five.
Yeah, stick to five. You know, and granted, anything after today is our best guess, but, you know, five years out is best we know, is best we can predict, is best the information we have, you know, our rates should be solid and sustainable right now.
And because of that, we have served the community very well, because of your leadership and the staff, and we know that our water rates are pretty steady, not necessarily the case of our neighbors that are really struggling right now with huge water rate hikes, but we managed to hold the line because of good leadership and planning, so thank you Bob.
No, thank you, that's, I've had good help.
Just kind of one thing, Bob talked... Just, kind of one thing, um, Bob talked about the, uh, rate study for water rates, um, in working with the, uh, the Duam Grant, um, and our financial consultant, we took that template and that model and used the same philo- philosophy and template for the sewer system as well. And so by, by projecting and forecasting our needs for the future, we're able to stabilize our rates to the best of our ability from year to year. Now clearly, things happen down the line, but for what we know now, uh, what this does is it, it, it helps to prevent volatility within our rates, where, you know, and Bob, I think he nailed it perfectly, uh, we can demonstrate to folks the logic, the thought, the cost of labor, inflationary costs, capital improvements, and work out that model where we know what numbers we need to hit at any given year to let the rates reflect it accordingly. And this is why we don't have fifty percent rate hikes, you know, in one year. Um, and, and truly, it's a testament to, uh, Bob, Andrew and staff, uh, for putting that together, that the model and templates we use are something that we'll use for years to come.
Well done, thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to item number five, recommendation to award sanitary sewer design and engineering, is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to authorize the Department of Public Works to award contract for professional engineering services per the attached proposal dated March twenty, twenty twenty-five, revised August twenty-six, twenty twenty-five, to Fishbeck in the amount of thirty-four thousand six hundred.
Support. Moved and supported, any other questions or discussion here again? We've managed to, uh, manage our sewer rates and have a fund balance that's supporting the volatility in, uh, in the demand for changes to, uh, from a grant bill to a sewer system. Any discussion there? Eric Dunn, I'll call for the roll.
Commissioner Groth.
Yes.
Commissioner Devery.
Yes.
Commissioner Bullheys.
Yes.
Commissioner Branson.
Yes.
Commissioner Nitre.
Yes.
Mayor Northrup.
Hi, motion carries, moving on to item number six, park facility security upgrades, is there a motion?
Motion to award the contract to Van Belkum, Inc., per attached quote, uh, pound sign C H zero zero one two zero nine V two, for an amount not to exceed forty-six thousand dollars.
Second. The move is supported, here again, Bob, a lot of your handiwork here, along with you, Tyler, and the staff. Uh, you have any additions you wanna add to this, I know this has been in the works a long time, it's been in the capital improvement plan for at least three or four years, I know.
You're right, yeah, we're excited about this one, you know, it's funny the things guys in the EPW get excited about, but, uh, you know, it, it's basically a, a programmable lock system that can be controlled, activated from many internet-enabled devices, you know, with secure sign-on. So, kind of the way that everything else is working right now, um, you know, just with shifting responsibilities in the sheriff's office and kind of the way everybody's been stretched, um, they're, they're no longer able to physically go unlock the doors, open the doors at a restaurant facilities like they had done years ago, so. This, this is a good practical way, it's gonna, I think, make the rental experience better for people in the commons buildings and the facilities, and, you know, overall, make our, our facilities safer and cleaner and, uh, deter, you know, just the little petty vandalism that we've been running into here and there. And I, I will say on this, no one could truly have really ran this. Um, I've worked alongside with him on it, but he, you know, from the time we started seeking budget numbers with different contractors and reviewing different products and everything, uh, he led this charge, and, you know, this was his choice, and he followed through and made sure it was purchase policy compliant, did this thing, and got me to this microphone right now with this recommendation, which I fully, fully support and understand.
These are really no-brainer upgrades, because it makes for a more efficient process for opening and for locking and closing, but also, from the standpoint of safety and security, it adds additional layer for the city, for our facilities, so. And hats off to you, Tyler, for saying this through, 'cause it's been here again on our radar for quite a while, and I know that it adds a lot of value. Bob, who has the actual control, is it on a, can they do it off iPhone, or how does it, how do, who has that?
Yeah, from a, from a desktop computer with an app.
So, so the deputy on, on duty has access?
Whoever we issue credentials to will be able to control it, you know, so it'll be similar to a programmable thermostat with internet connectivity. Um, the locks are going to, seven days a week, open at, if we say six AM, seven AM, the doors will unlock at seven AM every day, and we'll lock at nine PM. Um, in addition to the auto open-close, uh, we'll have the ability to, to fire them back and forth, or, you know, in the situation like with the Hughes Commons, if we know there's a renter there and that space is available to them on Saturday, that Hughes Commons lock will open at seven AM on Saturday and lock in at ten PM Saturday night. Remain locked until our staff get there the next morning to clean up.
When may it lock automatically, could someone get locked in?
No, there's a, no, there's a, there's a mechanical failsafe, there's an option there, um, either, depending on what hardware is currently in the door, there's, there's ways that they retrofit them with either a mechanical device or a motion sensor. Um, and they're all, they're all AC-powered with a battery backup, so, in a sense, two different levels of redundancy there for both getting locked in and if it's a power outage.
When will we, will we see this?
Um, installation this fall, yeah.
Anything else to add to that, Tom?
No.
Uh, motion is on the floor, roll call, please.
Commissioner Nitre.
Yes.
Commissioner Groth.
Yes.
Commissioner Bullheys.
Yes.
Commissioner Branson.
Yes.
Commissioner Devery.
Yes.
And Mayor Northrup.
Hi, one last thing, Bob.
Yes.
Thank you for, uh, clearing the debt skunk off Thirty-second this weekend, that I called you on, um, I, I'm sure a lot of people appreciated that.
If there's another one today, we'll get it.
Keep up the good work, Bob.
Thank you.
Thank you. Did you hit that skunk? Uh, moving on to the city manager's report, before we do that, we'll just go down the line here, Tobin? Dave? When do you start the new job?
End of the month.
Good for you, and you'll be working for?
Love your neighbor, if you're in Hudsonville, love the guy now.
Glad, and how did your bike ride go on Friday?
Yeah, the first Park Elementary Bike Bus, uh, I think they had about forty or fifty riders, uh, and we had great support from the sheriff's office, um, as well, so real cool way where kids can bike in a group, uh, to school.
Is it just Park or the other elementary schools looking to do something similar?
Um, I'm not sure if other, uh, ones do, this one, um, caters to Park, it starts at the library and then, uh, travels down Van Buren to Park Elementary.
It would be, it would be very nice if we could export that across to the other schools at some point, too, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Larry? Dan? Jack?
Uh, along with, um, Mark, that's coming back, my son will be coming back as well from his deployment, um, hopefully about mid-October, and, uh, I know he has some off time, so he'll be off for...
Get sand out of his boots?
Yeah, get sand out of his boots, I think, I think it's like two to four weeks he'll be off, and, uh, be glad to have him
We'll all be glad.
back home and taking care of things and get to see his face again, so.
Andrew, anything?
Nothing. Oh, wait, I do have one thing, uh, we had Sea Cadets this weekend, this past weekend, I wanted to mention that, um, the mayor is the commanding officer of our local Sea Cadet branch, and we went from eight members to twelve members this last weekend, so, uh, we're getting there, uh, we just started the unit in January, and it's going well, and just appreciate the mayor for all his help and support with that, and also the city for allowing us to use this venue for, for the Sea Cadets. It's a great program for our youth.
It's been a wonderful experience for, not just the kids, but for you and I, I think. Andrea?
Nothing.
Anything else from the staff? I'll turn this over to you, Tyler, for the manager's report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. One of my more, uh, smaller, uh, reports, uh, today, but a lot of good information. Uh, reminder, uh, Safety Night, as previously mentioned, is, uh, Tuesday, September eighteenth, so next, I, get that date right. Next Tuesday.
September sixteenth.
Which would be the sixteenth, not to be confused with the eighteenth, let me change that, uh, from four PM to seven PM. We are looking for a small handful of volunteers, um, our community engagement director, Lindsay Hicks, is out on maternity leave, uh, so our events coordinator, uh, Bryn, is, um, looking for volunteers, uh, two shifts available.
Happy to help.
Three thirty to five thirty, five thirty to seven thirty, uh, appreciate it, uh, by all means, uh, reach out to Bryn, um, serve food, set up, tear down, restock supplies, it is a very fun event, so if you or anyone you know is available to, uh, step up and help, uh, could definitely use, uh, use a few hands, and I'll be down there myself.
Tyler, where does that take us?
That'll be in Hughes Park. Always a great event, really appreciate Chief Dave, um, and a lot of our area partners stepping up for that, and, uh, it is one of my favorite events here in the community, so. Looking forward to that next Tuesday, and then, uh, Urban Hay Day, save the date, uh, Saturday, October eleventh, from ten AM to three PM. Uh, again, one of our community staples, um, staff's still putting things together, uh, but if you're really wanting to volunteer, I'm sure they could use some extra hands, um, but I haven't gotten requests, uh, for folks yet, but save the date nonetheless, uh, great event. We hit on this a little bit earlier, uh, but the Thirty-second Avenue Asphalt Replacement Project started September eighth, anticipated completion is on October third. Um, after a couple months of delays from the National Environment Protection Agency and the State Historic Preservation Office, um, and the project was delayed to start in September, our intent was in July. Uh, I do commend, uh, Dr. Vanderjet and, uh, Hut- Hudsonville Public Schools, they attended our pre-construction meeting, uh, to work out some details. Same-team mentality about how to navigate the traffic along Thirty-second, uh, but we're looking just under a, a month-long project, and, uh, you know, as a reminder, two hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars in grant funding, um, thus we're only pulling two hundred and twenty-one thousand, uh, from our major road fund.
Well, it would've been better if we could've done it in the summer, but it was not, we were victim of the circumstances.
We definitely weren't, you know, and I want, uh, you know, Bob and, and Don, um, Andrew, uh, looking to free up the money, because we were notified about this funding last December. Halfway through the fiscal year, to ensure that we have, you know, the funding, uh, based on our capital improvements, uh, and our budget is there, um, so Andrew was very much involved. Uh, but they operated at warp speed, Star Trek reference there, um, to get everything into, uh, these state agencies in which we needed approval, but, you know, sometimes you get the bull, sometimes you get the horns, um, and in, and in this case, a two-month delay, so, uh, we'll work with, uh, Reeve Riley, and, um, traffic patterns look as good as they can be out there, um, but happy so far with, uh, with the way that traffic's been, uh, been navigated. Uh, city staff and myself will, uh, meet next week with Well Tower to discuss, uh, a, the draft cell tower agreement that we talked about at your work session, um, last month. Uh, the draft agreement has been reviewed by the attorney, um, we're bringing staff to the table to hammer out a lot of details. I don't have a timeline, um, it'll depend on how this conversation goes, um, but when looking at a potential lease, regardless of how long it is, uh, the details matter here, um, because there's a good chance they'll be active in perpetuity, um, potentially long after our time here is over, so. We wanna be intentional to make sure that the agreement is what we want it and need it to be, I'll provide updates accordingly. Uh, wanna give a shout-out, Commissioner Larry Branson, really appreciate your help on the, uh, AV upgrades that are being considered, uh, here in the chamber in Terrace Square. Um, you know, I thought assessing language was tough, and then, then I've realized that, uh, audio and video language, uh, might one-up that. Um, it's like reading a foreign language, and, uh, with Commissioner's, uh, background, he has been very helpful in troubleshooting and problem-solving, so, um, Commissioner Branson, appreciate you, uh, working with staff, uh, we have some quotes, we're gonna hammer out some details, wanna make sure that, uh, we're in line with the budget and, uh, that we're getting what we need, but, um, so far, the conversations I've, I've had with, uh, with Larry, um, we're going in the right direction, so don't know exactly what the improvements look like right now, but we'll have some good things coming for, uh, Terrace Square and, uh, and for the chambers, this room right here, so, um, Commissioner, thank you. Um, as mentioned earlier, uh, shout-out, uh, Chief Essenberg, uh, Dave Dahl, uh, we got, Sarah and I got back from vacation, uh, to hit the fair Saturday night. And I'm telling you, it is the cleanest, one of the most organized fairs, uh, that my wife has been to, and she grew up raising rabbits, um, through her youth, so she would know, uh, but ju- just a great event, uh, the people, uh, the atmosphere, just kudos to you guys and the Hudsonville Fair Board as well. Um, what a great community staple, uh, fortunate event to have in our backyard. We had a great meeting with, uh, leadership team at the Outdoor Discovery Center last week, uh, with regards to, uh, MOU, uh, with maintenance and the operation, uh, the ODC facility, uh, we're hoping to locate at the Nature Center, we also talked about, uh, fundraising and the gap funding. Um, on that note, yesterday, we did receive preliminary scores for our two MDNR grants associated with the project. We're gonna take that feedback from the state, uh, Jacob and Sarah Stephens will be working, um, to look where we can improve upon those scores, and, uh, we'll come back to you at a, uh, I'll get to it later, a special city commission meeting, which will need approval to amend our grant application on September twenty-third, um, the scores were in the range, uh, that we thought they were, uh, but we're gonna give it our all, uh, to maximize this, and, and again, this is for trail improvements and, uh, to help fund, um, the majority, if not all, of the new lift station, uh, that will need, um, on New Holland as part of the project.
Now, the PUD does not need to come back to this planning commission, does it, we're all done, right?
Unless there's a change, um, from the ODC, we're all done at the planning level. Yep. And shout-out to the planning commission, that wasn't an easy one to, to get through, there was a lot of thought in there, um, you know, and kudos to, uh, to, to the planners on the board as well. Just a couple more things here, uh, at their meeting last week, the DDA approved the installation of two electrical vehicle charging stations, uh, at their September third meeting. Uh, the installation date is to be determined, parts and components for EV stations can be hit or miss right now, uh, but the DDA did make the move, uh, to move forward with that. The decorative light poles, uh, were installed, I believe about a week and a half ago, um, working with Bob on all things landscaping, uh, by the school app parking lot. It was a hot summer, and, uh, the grass, uh, realized as such, but, um, we're already getting positive feedback from our downtown merchants, um, and Terrace Square staff, um, on the forty-one parking spaces that we added there, and, and a great, and again, that was a great collaboration between the city and the DDA. A lot of extra work when we're collaborating there, even though we're under one umbrella, they are two separate entities, um, but definitely made an impact to the downtown area. At our budget meeting, our budget workshop, uh, last May, I mentioned that, uh, city staff and myself would be gearing up to, uh, really dive into the next steps of many steps with regards to realizing the Village Green and/or, uh, Library Community Center. Um, Economic Development Director Jacob Lagarde and myself, uh, met with two, uh, consultants, uh, last month, and the details are very philosophical in nature, the approach, what the, what the desirable outcome is from the planning documents we've had, from the surveys, and how to mold that all in to a timeline and, uh, and a path for success. Um, additionally, uh, last week, and Andrew, I've mentioned this to you a few times, one of my more favorite meetings here in Hudsonville, we met with a municipal financial advisor. Uh, the Harvey Street impro- the Harvey Street Bond, I forget the actual terminology, sorry.
It can be refunded, like refinancing your house, but it's called refunded in bond language.
That's why we keep you around, thank you, um, but that bond is, uh, callable in February, and so we look at interest rates, we look at the market, we look at the price, um, to refund the bond and bond out again, um, but we also talked about the city's goals as realizing the master plan, so the Village Green and/or Library Community Center, and how potentially roping these in will save, uh, the taxpayers in the community potentially hundreds of thousands of dollars long-term. Um, so not only are we talking about the approach and the design, uh, the, the backend is the funding, a lot more conversations, uh, to be had, but these are really, it, it's really good progress to where we're going, and it's really cool to see staff come back with questions, and, uh, you know, we're, we're getting there, we're, we're gonna bring, uh, bring you some updates here, I think we'll have an update, um, potentially at your September special meeting or an October workshop, um, you know, kind of give an update where we're at, but, um, spent a lot of time on this, uh, so far, it's just the beginning, um, but they're great meetings and good conversations nonetheless, so. Wanted to, like, not only the city commission know, but I would say, most importantly, uh, the residents in the audience and, and our viewers, um, that, uh, we are moving forward, but something this big in magnitude, the details matter, and, um, we're tackling it. Then finally, next week, MML Annual Conference, uh, September seventeenth through the nineteenth at the Amway Grand in Grand Rapids, always a great conference, uh, for professional development, for, uh, municipal leadership, elected officials, uh, city staff as well, so looking forward to that. And then, uh, finally, as mentioned, uh, we do have need for a special city commission meeting on September twenty-third. Uh, right now, the plan is six PM, unless, uh, Mr. Mayor, you'd like to tell us different, uh, we can navigate, six PM? Okay, um, and that, there will be at least one action item on the agenda, but most of that discussion will, or most of, excuse me, the meeting, will be discussion items related that we would traditionally do at a workshop. Was that?
What's the date on that?
Uh, it'll be two.
November twenty-third.
The twenty-third, two weeks from now.
Andrew, there's a finance committee meeting scheduled?
Yes, uh, October fifteenth, thirteenth, whatever that Wednesday is in October, um.
And I had a con- I had a conversation with, uh,
Fifteenth.
with Andrew, uh, there's a couple items that I'd like to put on that agenda, I'm concerning a value of county contracts that I think that we as a finance committee need to really kind of better understand the value for our dollar there. In reference to the sheriff's contract and the assessing contract that we need to, I think, discuss as a... think, discuss as a team. Concur?
Yeah, it's always good to look at this and see how we're doing business, realizing that the agreement, the services provider and the costs match up, so I think that's a great idea, it'll be a good meeting.
Anything else? Hearing none, we are adjourned.